Okay, we have a lull here, so I'll call our meeting to order. I appreciate everyone being here this evening. We, um, our first item on our agenda is to call our meeting to order and establish the fact that we have a quorum. Uh, we do have a quorum of our board team. We're missing, uh, Mr. Parker, who's been in Houston, uh, for a medical update, but he's doing quite well, so, uh, we're thankful, uh, for his good, um, uh, medical report that he got today. Um, that covers item one. Item two, um, we're on, really honored this evening to have, um, Pastor, Senior Pastor Lonnie Green from Bible Way Ministries, and he's gonna lead us in our invocation this, this evening. Pastor Green, thank you so much for being here.
If you would be so kind to bow your heads with me in a word of prayer. Dear Lord, we give you praise, and we thank you for a school district that's, that's still honored's prayer. In these troubled times we live in, we're asking you to be our guide. Now, Father, quiet our minds in this national moment of peo- of fear. Make our fear disappear, and in the place of fear, plant love, comfort, and peace in our community, and keep your protecting hand on us, Father. Let peace dwell here. Let peace begin in this room, and let our classrooms be filled with happiness, love, and contentment. And Lord, let us always remember that as many hands that it takes to build a house, so are many hearts that it takes to build a school. These things we ask in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen?
Thank you. We appreciate that very much. Thanks for being here. Um, I guess I get to lead the pledges tonight. We have students that are normally lead our pledges, and they're off today, so I'll do that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Yeah, I miss our students being here. I get to interact with them more than everybody else, 'cause I get to like, kinda line them up, so I miss that. Um, let me read our welcome deal here, our script for this evening. Good evening and welcome. As President of the Board of Trustees, it's an Angel Independent School District, I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. Also welcome those of you who might be watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our meeting agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budget, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in the public, and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team the opportunity to do so. Um, I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item, uh, should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with state law, our proceedings are recorded and will become a part of the San Angelo Independent School District's permanent legal record. In order that the tape may adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking, and I also ask, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please turn off or silence their cell phones at this particular time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting, and thank you for taking the time to join us here this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our school The next item I just referenced is item four. Uh, anyone wishing to make comments to our board team on items not on our agenda this evening, I welcome them to come forward at this time. I see no one wishing to do so, so we'll move forward to item five. Item five is the approval of our minutes. Uh, do we have a motion to approve our minutes?
We've approved the minutes for January fifteenth, 2018, and January twenty-second.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Gallegos, and a second from Mr. Dindel to approve our January fifteenth, 2018, uh, special finance and pre-agenda board, uh, meeting, and our January twenty-second regular board meeting. Are there any comments or questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item, um, is item six. We have a group of reports in item six. Um, A, uh, six As, our student enrollment report for the twenty-second Monday of school, which was January the twenty-ninth. We get that each week in our Friday facts. Uh, I believe this last one indicated a hundred and twelve. Um, we've actually got one that's a little bit more recent than that, that's, um, in the hundred and twenty range, but that's good news, and we, again, thank, uh, all the parents in our community who have the confidence, uh, to allow us to, to be partners with them in, in educating, uh, the students of our district. Uh, our next item, and I didn't check with Ms. Hanson prior to, we have anything, thank you, uh, again, for being here, uh, anything on our partnership with, uh, Goodfellow Air Force Base. Item C is, um, Ms. Holahan's gonna help us with, and that's, uh, to look at the Texas Academic Performance Report, our TAPER report, and have a public hearing concerning that.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, board members, and Dr. Detloff. Um, annually, we are required to, to, um, give you an update on, um, academic performance for our school district, and it is called the TAPER, Texas Academic Performance Report, and this is a public hearing. We are required by the Texan, uh, Texas Education Code thirty-nine, three oh six to hold this public hearing, and we are also required to publish a TAPER report, and I believe the board members receive their report, um, at the pre-agenda. There's a few extra on the table over there, and for those that, um, that, these will be sent out to, um, libraries, to various places where, to the campuses, so that anyone can, um, review this as they wish. In this, in this TAPER report, we will look at district accreditation, status, and performance, campus performance objectives, Texas Higher Education Student Performance Report, financial report, violent and criminal incident report, and the TAPER glossaries also included in there. First thing we're gonna look at is our accreditation status, and in, and it includes not only our academic performance, but also financial, and you will see that, um, our first rating, um, Mr. Bright in his department, they always do an outstanding job and receive the highest ratings, which is A superior. Our accountability rating for the district is met standard, and with both of those, it gives our school district, uh, we are an accredited school district because of those And in order to operate as a, um, a public school, you have to have that label accredited. Want to show you a little bit about some accountability ratings for our district. As, as I previously mentioned, our district met standard, and we had three high schools meet standard, two middle schools meet standard, and sixteen elementary schools meet standard. We did have one middle school and one elementary school that are in improvement required. So what does that mean? And what does that mean for our district? Okay, and we're gonna talk about that in a few minutes. I wanna give you some more demographics first, and looking at our numbers, our district size four, sixteen seventeen, and that's what this report is over, was fourteen thousand five hundred and seventy-two students. That does not include Head Start, because as I looked at these numbers, um, I did add up what was in this report, and it was early childhood all the way up to twelfth grade, and I'm thinking, but I see those, those monthly, or those weekly reports, and it says fifteen thousand, but it does not include Head Start. Our economically disadvantaged was sixty point one percent, our English language learners four point eight percent, our percent of special ed ten percent, and we had no refugees, Asiles. Okay? Let's look at our performance indexes. You will notice that there's a green line here, right? Right here, and I'm just gonna go over. That's, that is the state target score, and we're gonna talk about those. Index one is student achievement. The state's target score was sixty, and our district in index one scored a sixty-nine. There's a big mythology about that and, and what that means, and how do you get there, but our target was sixty, and that is all students, all tests. If you look at index two, that's student progress, and that is individual student progress. The state's score, the state's target was twenty-two, and as a district, we, we rated at the thirty-six. Index three is closing performance gap, and the state's target for that index was twenty-eight, and we are at a thirty-seven. And then for both post-secondary readiness, which is index four, the state's target was a sixty, and we, um, rated a seventy-three. Now, you're going, Shelley, what does that mean? Right? Okay, we're gonna talk about that. Looking at our passing rates, if you look at by subject area, all students, this is pretty much index one, one and two you're looking at. In all subjects, the, um, our district scored a sixty-nine, and I'm gonna say sixty-nine percent. We are under the state's average of seventy-five percent. In reading, the district score was sixty-five percent, again, under the state's average of seventy-two percent. In math, we scored at a seventy-four percent, and state's average was seventy-nine percent. In writing, we scored as a district sixty-two percent, state's average was sixty-seven percent. In science, we scored seventy-four percent, and state's average was seventy-nine percent. We're just right under the state average in all of these. And in social studies, our district average was sixty-eight percent, and the state's average seventy-seven percent. Okay, so, think about all of that, and I'm gonna show you one more graph. This is by student groups, and you can see how we scored by student groups. Two student groups I wanna talk to you about specifically, special ed and ELL. We, we really are struggling, those are really, uh, I'm a fragile group. So Shelley, what are we doing? Okay? Well, one, we are focusing on all student progress, not just special ed, not just ELL, English language learners, okay? Because we need all students to progress. Okay, that's what, that's what our goal is. But what are we doing for, um, all students? We are, look, we are working on tier-one instruction. We've got to increase the, the, our tier-one instruction. How are we doing that? We're doing that by prof- prof- focused professional development, such as guided reading, um, providing tier-three reading interventions to our ELL students. We are providing, um, professional development in six traits of writing, kindergarten through, and I believe it's through, Mr. Kimball, do you remember, if it's through eighth grade right now, and then going up into the high schools the following year. What are we doing for ELL students? We've added three full-time student support teachers, and specifically at Bradford, Lincoln, and Lee, and then three part-time, half-time, um, student support teachers at Goliad, San Jacinto, and CFC. At Lakeview and Central High School, we have English Language Arts teachers providing supplemental, supplemental literacy programs for, um, our students, and then also at Glenn. What are we doing in special ed? In special ed, we've added an elementary IC for special ed to work with teachers, because our teachers are trained in general ed. They don't have, they're in classes, they're not specifically taught, how do I work with struggling students? They are in general, but not if they're identified with some, with some, um, large gaps in their learning. So we have hired an instructional coach to work with teachers, to, um, offer support, and we're also this year, like we did last year, um, gonna conduct a special ed audit. I will tell you that a lot of the things that we're doing this year stems from the curriculum audit that we did last year, and, and the work that we've done. Okay, I wanna talk about some other district information. Advanced dual credit courses, um, you can see that we are the first column, sixty-five point six percent is our district, and you can look at state, where our students were sixty-five point six percent of all our students completed advanced dual credit courses, whereas only fifty-five percent of the state did. Advanced course completion for nine through twelve, the first one was eleven through twelve, you can see that we were at forty-one point four percent, and the state was at thirty-five percent, thirty-five point nine. And enrolled in the Texas Higher Education Institute, um, that's, of course, Texas college, college, two-year cour- two-year courses, or four-year. Um, we're sitting at forty-seven percent, and the state's at fifty-six percent. Know that this does not include any of our students that went out of state, doesn't include the military, and it doesn't include, um, technical schools. And we know that we have students that attend those places, because we can walk into, um, Central High School and into Lakeview High School with pictures up, and it'll say military, or it'll say Harvard, or it'll say Princeton, or it'll say the, um, culinary schools in Colorado, or whatever, so, so they're up there, but this only looks at the ones that are enrolled in Texas schools. Our attendance rate was ninety-five point nine percent, ma- pretty much matches the, the, um, state percent. Our annual dropout rate is one point five percent, and this is for the class of two thousand and sixteen, whereas the state was two percent. And our graduation rate was ninety-four point eight percent, whereas the state was ninety-three point seven percent. Wanna talk just briefly about some celebrations, I'm not gonna leave this up here long, but we're doing a lot of things in this district to move, move all the arrows to the right direction. As we work on, um, strategic planning committees, as we work on teaching for learning plans, as we work on learner profile, um, all of those things, as we work on curriculum, as we work on the professional development, all of those things, it's going to take time to move the arrows all the right direction. We're moving there, it doesn't happen overnight. So we've taken some big gains, some big steps, and we've made some big gains this year, but it's still gonna take a few more years to get us there. So I'm excited about some of those things, and I'm not gonna leave this up here long, 'cause I really just wanted to highlight a few things. On the next one, I wanted to highlight the teacher for, the learner profile, that two-hundred-and-fifty teachers were involved in district curriculum initiatives, guided reading K through five, writing initiative K through six, completed the ELAR curriculum, which is the most important, one of the most important pieces that we have, because we know that no matter what school you go to, we're teaching the same objectives, and that's the most important thing, that we're all teaching the same thing. I'm not saying we're teaching it alike. I might, I might not teach it the same way that, um, Matt might teach it, but we are all doing the same objectives in the same nine weeks. Um, we've also completed social studies K through twelve and math six through eight, and this is the first year of implementation for that, and what will happen is they will review that in the summer. Right now, we're in the process of, of, um, completing K through five and nine through twelve math curriculum, and science K through twelve, and future plans is in eighteen and nineteen is to do the electives. I don't think we've ever had an aligned elective curriculum, which is interesting. We also align the administrator's evaluation with the teaching for learning plan. We're asking our students, we're asking our students to be collaborators, to be critical thinkers, to be, um, creative. Now we're asking the administration to do that also. So we're aligned from top to bottom on the expectation. And then, of course, um, hosting the transformational leadership in the Texas ASC, Curriculum Leadership Academy, that's pretty exciting, and as, um, I went through the, the Texas Transformation, the TSA transformational leadership, and we were talking about the curriculum, we had probably four other districts plus, plus Angelo State University. So that was exciting, to see that alignment, and then moving up into the, the colleges. The other thing is, of course, all of our, our partnerships. It is unbelievable the number of partnerships that we have through College Week, the Texas Success Initiative with Howard College, which, um, we had some training today, and our students will, um, have the opportunity to take that TSI assessment that they have to have before they go into a college, if they didn't score high enough on the SAT, or ACT, or, or a STAR test. Um, our district-wide character education, our community resource coalition was something that, um, is, is a great, for me, it's exciting, because it's the agencies in our community that come together, and what came out of that was a community resource fair, which thirty-two community resources came together and says, this is what I have, this is how I can offer support to the students in our community. And then, of course, our partnership with Goodfellow, and Rad Kids, and all those kinda things. So for more information about the TAPER, it can be found under our district website under, for the two thousand and sixteen-seventeen accreditation status, um, you, and it can also be found on TEA's website. The two thousand and seventeen TAPER district and campus reports are on our website also, and then the accountability manual is also on, um, the TEA website, so, wanted to share that with you. Do you have questions?
Thanks, Ms. Holahan. Questions, anyone? Yes, Dr. Detloff?
Ms. Holahan, I just wanna say, thank you for the work that, uh, our curriculum instruction and professional development team has done to close these achievement gaps. Uh, if you look at the indicators, there are certainly indicators that we are above the state average, and there are indicators that we're below the state average. Uh, I think the important thing is that, uh, we are working on the academic progress for our students. Would you, or Mr. Kimball, or even an executive director, like to talk about, uh, that work that's taking place even today, uh, to talk about the details today, as far as aligning our curriculum, which would, uh, hopefully, uh, reduce some of these, uh, academic gaps?
So today was a professional development day for, uh, our staff, uh, and there were two big components. Uh, one was the, the groups that are implementing curriculum that was written last year, so the, the K through twelve, uh, English Language Arts, uh, middle school math, they met to give feedback and look at the implementation, how things were going, uh, and then the other groups were looking at the curriculum that has been, uh, in the process of being written this year, uh, to give feedback on that process, and then the, all the curriculum writers came together in the afternoon, while teachers went back to campuses and continued to work on the, the curriculum. Our curriculum writers came together to make those tweaks, look at that feedback, and make adjustments. One of the things we know is that our curriculum is a living document, it's not, uh, written in stone, and then it never changes, it constantly changes with the needs of our students, and so, uh, our, to our writing teams looked at that feedback and had some great conversations, just some amazing work being done today throughout the district.
I do have a question, Shelley.
Yes.
And it has to do with, it seems like every year, the state scores higher than we do, um, on, where, you know, where it says all students, you know, it showed what our score was, and what the state's score, and we, when we start asking other districts how they scored, they're below state average, too. So do we, do we have a definitive, uh, answer as to how the state comes up with state average?
I, I do not have an answer for that. I will tell you that, um, Ms., Dr. Ritter, and myself, and Ms. Gomez recently went to a, um, a Moak Casey, uh, presentation on, on account-
Tell everybody who, tell everybody who Moak Casey is, okay?
Oh, Moak Casey is, Mr. Detloff, please help me with this one, I just know him by Moak Casey.
They're really lobbyists, uh, in education, that, uh, uh, lobbies for public schools across Texas, uh, and then, of course, within that, uh, they break down policy, uh, trends in education, uh, and, of course, a big piece of that is the, the academic and financial pieces of, of a public ed system.
And what, uh, one of the things that I wanted to tell you is pretty interesting, and of course, the, the indexes and the domains are gonna change next year, we know that, and we don't know what it's gonna look like, but it depends on what the federal government says, yes, Texas, you know, we're gonna approve that as, as a document, but one of the most interesting things, um, that was presented, and that, um, I think the realization that across the state, that if you are in a, the higher poverty district that you are in, the more difficult it is to educate because of lack of academic experiences in younger years, which is, which is what, what, um, some of the things that we see our students coming in with, they don't have the academic experiences, um, that a Highland Park, or, you know, one of the higher, and the state in the accountability coming up is going to, um, uh, account for that, depending on, um, like, in student progress. So that's gonna be an interesting change, but as far as why are we always under the state, I, I, and, and the districts that you asked, the districts that, why are they? I don't have an answer for that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think for clarification purposes, we've been to a number of, as a board, we've been to a number of different trainings, and a lot of times when this information's coming out, everybody that's at the training, uh, pretty much regardless of, um, how this, how, how large a percentage of disadvantaged students they might have, it seems like nearly all of them are below the state average, and then when we look at how did they, um, compute the state average, then there's no real indication. So it almost makes, to me, it makes it seem like that the state's inflating the state average, you know, as opposed to, um, if you add up each individual district, then there's, it would make sense that, uh, in doing that, that there would be a number of districts that were, uh, exceeded state average, and the ones you mentioned, even though they are outstanding schools, they're also not necessarily, uh, that high in enroll, in student enrollment.
Right.
So when you look at, uh, San, San Antonio ISD, Northside ISD, um, you know, there's a number of, obviously Dallas ISD and Houston ISD, uh, there's a, a large number of students in those districts, and they're performing below level, whereas the Highland Parks and Alamo Heights and others are, are above state level, um, but, so it's, it's frustrating, uh, I know it is to y'all, and it is to me as a long-term board member, that, um, I don't understand the accountability system better than, than what I do.
That is because it changes yearly.
That's right.
And even, even to date, we, um, gave a presentation to our principals probably two weeks ago, and from that time, it's already changed again, so we're always, we're always trying to, um, hit a moving target, and we still don't know what it's gonna look like even for this year, which is interesting.
I think the thing I'm most proud of is that we are, we're focused on the improvement of all students.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, as we move forward, that can, that needs to be our continued focus, and, and we just need to make sure that we, um, you know, there's accountability standards, and there's a reason for that, uh, but we have to focus on each individual student and make sure that they're making progress.
And, and Mr. Lehman, I think what's been exciting this year is, um, when we, as we look at the progress for all students, we're not looking at pushing up the bottom, and we use this in our, um, training with our principals, we're talking about pulling the string, so we're pulling everybody up, not just pushing the bottom up, uh, for success for bottom. We want everyone to grow, and part of, and part of that is our learner profile, what are we doing in the classrooms?
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments from anyone?
I just had a comment, because, you know, this has a lot of stuff in it, it really does.
It does.
And, and a lot of it just catches your eye when you're just going through it. My eyes still hurt from reading it this weekend. But the one thing that got me was, was, and this is in defense of pub, Texas Public Schools, of what we do as school districts, as public schools, 'cause I noticed how many students with disabilities that we have in our, in our district, and that is a, it's a, it's a big number, but we have them, we have them, and in defense of Texas Public Schools, we take this, we take these kids, we take these kids, we work with them, we give them every opportunity we can to succeed. We don't turn them away, we bring them in to our fold, and we work with them, and that's, I mean, I just saw that number, I said, that's a lot of students, but you know what? It's a good number, because we're taking them, we're not denying them, and, and I, you know, I just get all worked up about this whole- And, and I, you know, I just get all worked up about this whole mess going on with the state and I'm not even, well, can I say charter schools?
Thank you, Mr.
Can I say it, can I say charter schools? It's my soapbox right now, but, you know, it just drives me nuts that a lot of them don't take them. And, and we do. And that's what upsets me more than anything is when you see these numbers right here, that we are taking these kids in and we work with them, and these people are receiving state funding and are denying them. So there, I said it.
Mr. Lehman.
It's a good number.
Moving on.
Thanks, Gerard. It's okay, it's okay to be on a soapbox.
Don't just miss Mr. Archer.
And to be, and to be passionate. And, and you know, something else that Mr. Archer would say, and I'll say it in his absence is, you know, and you alluded to the gap that exists initially with a lot of students, and we've petitioned on a number of times to increase the, the ability that the district has for early head start and head start. You know, if we were able to do that, then some of those students, we believe, as a board, would be better prepared. So that's something that we need to continue to focus on as we move forward as a district. So thank y'all for those comments, and although I didn't get on a soapbox, I could. Our next item, thanks, Ms. Hollein. The next items are our consent items. Y'all did a really poor job with consent items while I was gone. But I need approval for consent items A through C. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Mr. Hernandez and a second from Dr. Kingman. Do we have any comments or questions about our consent items? Consent item A is to consider donations. Those are listed on our screen, and we appreciate contributions made to the district on the benefit, in benefit for our students. Item B is to ratify the administration's actions in the conveyance of properties. That sounds pretty complicated, but that's basically us selling properties that are delinquent in taxes, and we do that in conjunction with the county and city official entities. And then item C is to consider Tasby Board Policy Update 109. And I'm sure in my absence last week, y'all spent a little bit of time on that, but that's-
We did, and Mr. Lehman, we also pulled two policies from Update 109. Do you remember which two they were? DH local and FEA local. F D as in dog? DH, DH local and FEA local for further development.
Okay. So the most-
There were FDH and what was the other?
DH, DH and FEA.
Yes, sir.
Both local. It must be a hearing problem because we've, you know, there's been a number of us that have stated it. That's right. It's, I think from that soapbox, he can't hear quite as well.
I yelled too loud. I have the microphone.
So, all right, so that's our consent items. Do we have any further board comment or questions?
No, I had a question, but Shelley answered my question earlier on the-
On the FFAA local.
FFAA local, see, I got that one right.
Yeah, FFAA local had to do with testing for, hearing testing and vision testing for students. And the, the Tasby doesn't like policies to be in, in local and in legal, so they, they were just removing a policy or making sure that it wasn't in both places. But we will continue to test as part of our, our state policy, legal policy. So any other questions about that? If not, any public comment? Okay, I call the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Item eight is to consider Bill's accounts and financial statements for the month of January of 2018.
Move for approval of those statements mentioned?
We have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mr. Gallegos to consider approval of our Bill's accounts and financial statements for the month of January 2018. Is there a board comment concerning this?
Mr. Lehman, just a point of reference for those viewing the, this meeting on Channel Four, although all these reports are attached to our, our board book, at this time, they're also available online at the SAISD website under the heading of Financial Transparency for anybody that wants to view those, those reports.
Thanks, Mr. Dindel, for that reminder. Are there any other board comments? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item nine, to consider the proposed amendment to the district's official budget in the general fund. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion from Mr. Dindel and an early second from Mr. Gallegos to approve an amendment to the district's official budget. This is, moves money around from function codes, but doesn't result in any monetary differences. So we're just moving money around and make sure that when it comes time for us to have our audit, we're in good shape. Any other board comments or questions concerning our motion? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 10, to consider our election services.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lehman, Ms. Hopkins, I believe, is going to give us an update on item 10.
Okay.
This is just our standard contract that we have with the Tom Green County Elections Administrator. There will be four other school districts having this election at the same time, so we will split the cost.
Okay, thank you. So those school districts, San Angelo, Very Best Wall, Great Creek, okay, will hold a joint general bond election. That date is May 5th of 2018. And as Ms. Hopkins mentioned, the, the cost of calling the election will be shared by those other districts. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for election services with the Elections Administrator of Tom Green County.
Thanks, Mr. Gallegos. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Dr. Kingman. So our motion would be to approve the contract for election, election services with the, the Elections Administrator of Tom Green County in, in the state of Texas. Any other board comment or questions concerning this contract?
And there are five on there.
Yeah, it does say five. I didn't mention Kristoval.
Kristoval's on there.
So, okay. So we'll be doing this in conjunction with five rather than the four previously mentioned. So does anybody have any other comments or questions? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 11, to consider the San Angelo Independent School District's Head Start and Early Head Start Continuation Grant. And Ms. Taunton's going to, she's ahead of me. She's going to prepare that and present that to us. So thanks, Rachel.
Good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. Before you is, I'm here seeking approval for the continuation grant. We are in a five-year grant period, and every year we have to renew a budget for the next year. So this is for 18, 19 school year. The first section is the continuation application, and it is, it consists, consists of our goals that we, our long-range goals that we have come up with based on our community assessments and our self-assessments throughout the years that we have been in this five-year grant. Some of, some of the goals we have accomplished already. For instance, one of them was to seek additional funding for playgrounds, and we were able to buy three brand-new playgrounds for each of our Head Start centers. So that, that section just talks about the, the goals that we've had, the expected impact and outcome that we expect for that year, the progress and program impact for that year, and then our desired outcomes for the following year. And so those, there's several years included in that plan. Our Head Start budget that we are seeking approval for is a little over $3 million. Our amount did not change, it is the same. We lost a personnel unit in early August of last year, and so we've continued with, we just distributed some of the responsibilities out to a couple of other, of the specialists in the program and have continued to move forward with that. Same thing for Early Head Start. Our Early Head Start budget is a little over $1 million, and those same positions were split 95-5. 95% of their salary is paid out of Head Start and 5% is paid out of Early Head Start. But the same amount still continues for those two grants.
Okay, thanks, Rachel. So do we have a motion to approve our continuation grant? See if I can get the right language right here. I guess that's all it is, approval of the 2018-2019 continuation grant.
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve the administration's recommendations for 2018-2019 Head Start and Early Head Start Continuation Grant. Are there other comments from our board team?
Ms. Taunton, in, in this continuation grant, 2018 and 2019, this is the final year of the grant period for-
For the five-year.
For the five-year period, so things could change after this.
Yes, sir, they could.
Okay, thank you.
Does that mean they're changing for the positive or changing for the, for the negative?
That, that means they could be changing.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Other comments or questions? Any public comment concerning our continuation grant? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 12, to consider the San Angelo Independent School District Head Start and Early Head Start Technical Training Assistance Plan, and Ms. Taunton's going to help us with that as well.
Yes, sir. This technical training assistant plan allocates funds for us to use to provide training for our Head Start and Early Head Start staff in the areas of need for our programs. For Head Start, we have a total amount of $31,935 that we can use for traveling outside of, for the different conferences or for bringing consultants in to work with our staff here locally. And in Early Head Start, our total amount is $25,395, and we use that as well. Today, we had, we brought in someone from Lakeshore Learning that is a Head Start consultant that works for them to provide some training for our Early Head Start staff on transitions and behavior support in the classroom. So that was one of our professional development trainings today that we brought somebody in.
Okay, great. Any other comments or questions concerning that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hernandez and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve the administration's recommendation for the approval of our 2018-2019 Technical and Training Assistance Plan. Other comments or questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Motion is approved. Our next item has my name on it. Item 13 is to consider our superintendent evaluation contract and salary under Texas Government Code 551074. We've, as a group, I think we've decided, we might actually get this done earlier than we normally do, but as a group, we decided that we would work on, the way this works for those of you who are in the audience that don't know, and certainly those that are, might be watching on Channel Four, is that this is a group evaluation, but it's initiated by each board member individually. So each board member's asked to evaluate Dr. Detloff, and then after we do that individually, then collectively, we determine areas that we might want to, you know, further, that we might have concerns about or that we might want to continue to focus on. And the board is in the process now of putting together our individual evaluations. So I think there's two or three, actually four, that have turned those in. So if the other three would get those to me, then I can compile that, and we'll be ready for our pre-agenda board workshop. So thank y'all for doing that, and our plan is to, on the March 19th, to try to complete our, our evaluation of Dr. Detloff. That covers our superintendent evaluation and contract and salary, our plans accordingly. And then the announcements are, our financing pre-agenda board workshop is, as I just previously mentioned, is scheduled for March 19th. That's after spring break at 5:45. And then our regular board meeting will be on March 26th, a little late this month again because of spring break falling in the middle of March. Do we have any items other than our superintendent evaluation that we need to make sure that we address?
Do you have a deadline date you want us to-
Well, the sooner you get it to me, Gerard, the sooner I get it compiled. So I would appreciate, I would appreciate it if you got it to me at least a week in advance so I can put everything together. I don't have a administrative assistant, so, you know, I am, I am my own administrative assistant, so Becky helps me with a lot of stuff, but I would prefer that I get it put together in some format where she can read it before I ask for her help. So, so does that answer your question?
Yes.
Kinda? Okay.
A week before.
Yeah, that's right. At least, that's right. So that's good. I don't think anything else we need to work on or any, any other business? If not, and here are no objection, we'll stand adjourned.